Are you going?
Yes.
No, so I'm not excited to see, but my...
Oh.
Wow.
Okay.
So, are you...
Oh, okay.
That's right. I don't know.
You may want...
Well, I can tell you.
Yeah, the reason is that...
There.
Um, I don't know if you need to discuss this.
Um, let's do this. So, well, here's...
I'm sorry, I have a question for the group.
Are you ready?
Okay.
Hello.
Yeah.
We're gonna...
Yeah.
Really, you feel...
Just order.
Okay.
Okay.
No, no one, no one, look.
Wow.
So, I think it's regular.
I speak.
I think it's regular.
And then, and one on the left, one on the right.
Yeah, you know.
Okay, then.
Uh, just before you...
I mean, what are you, clerk?
I'm not a clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the expert in the room, so on that note, uh...
Yes.
So, we were...
Okay.
I was always considering...
Um...
Okay, well, okay.
Oh, yeah, you stood on in there.
So...
Right.
On... Hey, Chair. Now, whenever you're ready, we're...
Like, is she in the normal world?
Do you watch football?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
How did this appear?
Yeah.
There's...
There's our meeting.
Now, it's, um...
Why did you...
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, I'm...
You don't have to...
I just have to get...
Uh...
I have an app, it's...
So, I'm...
That's...
You got it.
Yeah.
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 That's...
It's...
Yeah.
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 Well, it'll be a...
Nice.
Yeah.
I feel sorry about...
Yeah.
Okay.
What you see? I don't feel like...
Okay.
Okay.
But, guys, I'm going to...
I have to take some...
Then, you go over there, say something.
And you...
I want to...
You... Let me check that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. Time is 6:40 PM, and I am officially calling this meeting to order. Secretary... Andrews. You can take your seat.
Here, please.
President.
Vice Chair, your new chair. President, Leo Patton. I care about the end, so... Because, you know, they are... The line call. This is kind of... Here. That good. Here. Pardon me. Thank you. All right.
Secretary. I just took your time, uh, if I prepare and work vice chair to say what we words. There is a year, you have done earlier, so, vice chair.
Uh, we have... Position, uh, and I'm the fireboard of the vice chair. Training, um, we are really excited to meet the street of training about, uh, the seekers, lending, and a so many economic development, we develop that. Um, as a bank mission, um, we have three positions for the team, uh, and the associates have been checking us previously for that process. Um, as a community, we adopted, uh, redevelopment rate program, so... And we have a strong, mighty committee, um, that's dedicated to enhancing the activities of the redevelopment rate program, and as a part of that, our committee... Amongst others that we have hosted, will host in the future, um, as a means of having, uh, local... And very... As far as our, uh, we are working towards our second milestone, our first milestone. John last month, after this successful... Um, we're anticipating having another meeting, um, the second Monday of each month, uh, here, uh, it's not... Um, other milestones for us include, uh, as, um, our staff, our, our secret program, so that we can have technicalists versus some state... And, um, some short-term milestones include, um, putting together a process for including, uh, and... Thank you, Chair, and seeing that that process is all... Uh, that's other work. Um, I think it's gonna be a stop and just thank you, and... Congratulations for trying the partnership program. So, go to... Oh, so, go to... Got several graduates and a couple people who are in the class.
I said, everybody get up, get me in my seat, blow off my... I put my brain fast. I only got about fifteen left, I'm going with this. Uh, as good for taking their time, before we switch over to our... I just would like for any of our elected and or appointed officials in the room to please stand up and state your name and position. How's it going? William Fishman.
So... Commissioner Major... Mr. Major Strong.
This is your... I've got a... Point.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, everyone, coming out here today. Uh, thanks to Troy, our media relations director at the back, and Hoco Seaworth. Okay, great. Good practicing, and you got it now, correct, yeah? Um, thanks, Chair, for also coming on the organize this, and thanks for our mayor. Uh, I'm R. Mark Shaski, I represent the planning department, along with my fantastic colleague, Kate Selgo. Come visit us with all of your things, so, in victories, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, at St. Paul. Also, I'd like to recognize our clerk, Madam Clerk, Erin Chapman. Thank you for being here today and helping us organize this meeting. Um, I have the pleasure to recognize our legend in the room, Hoco Seaworth, Eleanor Seaworth. Eleanor served as a fabulous parliamentarian for the Michigan Municipal League for more than twenty-five years. So, Hoco is a librarian and notes her stuff. In her parliamentary role, she's traveled to cities all across Michigan to train elected officials, like everyone here, and useful staff. Um, Hoco was an elected official. Her particular interest in rummaging procedures stems from her experience as a former elected official. This has given her a special understanding of the challenges that we face and how to interact with this thing. With that being said, thank you, Hoco for being here, and you're the board. Thank you so much.
I'm delighted to be here. Um, yes, it is true, I've been the parliamentarian for the Michigan Municipal League for over twenty-five years, and I've been to lots of big cities and places that are barely wide in the road. So, I'm delighted to be here today and to talk to you. I do want questions throughout, so if I say something that's of interest, please raise your hand right away, and we'll take care of it. If it's something I'm going to get to anyway, I'll tell you, we'll get to it later, but if not, I will take care of it right away. I think, first, it's, and of course, I have Robert's Rules of Order with them. You'd be disappointed if I didn't. Here's the Robert's Rules of Order in brief, which is really the book that I recommend to people. Um, this is the third edition, and, uh, I love what it says on the inside cover, kind of tells the whole story. If you're in a hurry to learn what you need to know before a meeting, if you have thirty minutes, read chapters two to four. If you have forty-five minutes, read chapters two to six. If you have ninety minutes, read chapters one to eleven, which is basically the book. Um, it is, it's all, it's Robert's taken down to its narrowest form. Well, not quite, because later on, I think, this flyer, which is just one page, that really takes it down to the narrowest form. Um, I want to say that I have had a lot of fun watching meetings, so I recognize people who are here in the meetings. Um, I have enjoyed it. It's an interesting, fun mix of formality, because your mayor is a very good chair. He's a very good meeting chair, he gets the whole motions thing very well. And also, kind of a friendly folksy atmosphere combined with it, so it, it has both, both things. It's not, it's not usual for me to find a community that manages to combine both things quite so well. Either they're very formal, or they're old man of each other. So, I explore a lot of that, as you can imagine. Um, I'm not going to mention any communities, but if you want to ask me privately, I would tell you where the worst are. Um, the, the whole thing about Robert's Rules and parliamentary procedure is we have to understand that there's a funnel of laws, and on your handout, if you know... And by the way, I'm just going to reference the fact that, um, although the print is small, my email address is there on the first slide, so that when you think of something later, and you say, what was it she said about? You can send me an email. There's a certain order in Michigan to the rules by which an elected body must conduct itself, and I should say here that that should say really elected or appointed. Because if you're appointed by the city council members to a position, it's like in the old Star Trek, Zack. All the rules that apply to them apply to you, and I know I have the bylaws of the Planning Commission right in front of me, and they do, for example, address the Open Meetings Act, which indeed, you do have a good procedure for how to use the Open Meetings Act in the Planning Commission. And that's because that all applies to you, so anything that applies to any elected person applies to any person they appoint. So, that's why, in the room, I know we have some elected and some appointed. It, all, all these things that I'm going to say apply to everyone, they're not special. And, um, of course, the first is the Constitution of the United States. It used to be, when I first started doing that, people would kind of look at me and say, the Constitution, that doesn't happen, that is not with us. But, as we know, right-to-carry laws have become quite an issue in Michigan, particularly on the west side of the state, but all over. And certainly, we are in the midst of understanding what, um, freedom of speeches and freedom of assembly. So, those are all constitutionally protected items and are important for us all to know. Next, any applicable federal laws, which of course vary by municipality and entity, but everybody gets to think about the IRS when we think about things we have to do. So, that does apply to everyone. Of course, the Miss- Michigan Constitution of nineteen sixty-three, which, um, frequently gets amendments on the ballot, but we have not had a revision on the ballot in a very long time, and I personally, as in my own opinion, predict we will not. There are so many different groups who want different things that the list of revising the Constitution would make everybody nuts. It really is working better that we're doing it now, amendment by amendment on, on the ballot, so I don't see any revision coming. And of course, any applicable Michigan laws, and the two that are the most important are the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act. They were both adopted in nineteen seventy-six. What happened in nineteen seventy-six in the United States? That's a good answer, but there's something else. Watergate. Watergate happened, the whole Nixon thing happened, and everybody went, whoa, we have got to do things in public. Interestingly enough, early versions of the Michigan Constitution actually use the phrase, near the open door. So, it's, this was not really new in Michigan, but it was the first time it became a state law. And so, around, the U.S. passed a national Open Meetings Act law, and then state by state, they did it. And the category is called sunshine laws, because they all basically, although they vary a little bit from state to state, they all have the same thing, which is they want to make it that everybody has to pay attention to doing business in public. Well, nineteen seventy-six, nineteen seventy-six, people thought a Dick Tracy watch was far out. Now, we've got so many electorals, and I should hold up myself, those things are what's making us nuts now. All this social media, all this stuff going up. What constitutes anymore a violation of the Open Meetings Act? Well, I was, I'm assisting an organization that is publicly elected, and I cannot get the members of the body, which is of seven, to stop saying, you know, that email you sent me, or that email you sent all of us, or the, the thing that they said. You can't do that. You, you have to be so careful with what goes out. What are your two biggest enemies? Forward and reply all. When you, you don't know, you just think you just said that. One member of a board sent it to another member of the board, you think it's just the two of you, but you don't know who they did reply all and forward to. So, recently, this was a Michigan, um, uh, legal, uh, problem. The Attorney General, these people were ruled as having violated the Open Meetings Act. Four members of the Parks and Rec Commission were on an email discussing what was going to happen at the next meeting, what they should do. Only three contributed, but the fourth person was there. So, when, when they were sued, they said, well, the fourth person never said anything. Well, the Open Meetings Act has one phrase in it that really trips us up. It's called deliberating toward a decision. That's, in fact, the whole thing, that's the biggest part of the Open Meetings Act, is that phrase deliberating toward a decision, and the Attorney General said, maybe the fourth person didn't say anything, but they were participating in deliberating toward a decision. And in fact, when they went to the meeting, all four voted the same way. Um, although I don't think that had, that's a matter of fact, but I don't think that had to do with the Attorney General's decision. It was, yes?
You know, that's... You know, we talked about this. When we leave, we'll turn... Also, hey... Very...
No. Right. Right. Well, you're a wonderful clerk, by the way, great minutes, super minutes, super minutes. And I were discussing the fact that under FOIA Act now, because I have the wonderful opportunity to do the trainings for the Michigan Association of Municipal Lords too, and now they want us to track down the, um, texts. So, it's, they're not when they suddenly decided that included emails, now that so includes texts. The other, so you're quite right, the FOIA issue is a big one, because there was a point at which people thought, well, if it's not on the city's computer or the city's something, it's okay. No, it's the city's information, and it doesn't matter if it's on your laptop or your home, or whatever it is, if it's city business, it's available. And I think we know from a former mayor of Detroit, sometimes when they have to go through everything, they find things you wish they hadn't found. So, um, you know, you have to do that. So, many communities are making sure that, in particular, their elected officials are using a city email, city address email, and if you get anything that comes to you that's not, that's city business that came on your private one, they just tell you forward it immediately, do not respond. Yes?
First, we have a body that's likely, uh, we have to... So, it's like, you know, yes and... So, um, the resident... Which, you know, I thought that this should, uh, we went to teachers, we went to... When I, when I told them that they were, um, incorrect, they told me no. According to the office, you know, they could do, so it's that, that my brother was...
Well, now, does this group, that, I think, a member of a, a public body that...
Well, yeah, well, no, we're not, because we're...
You're, you're basically homeowners group.
No, no. But they're basically residents, so they're like...
Residents group.
It's just a group, and so it's like the residents of the housing, it's public housing.
Thank you.
And they have resident, they have resident council. So, like, as I said, when they came in, they recorded the meeting, you know, basically. I was, I was upset, because I felt that that was something that they couldn't do, because it was all residents. And then, they were violating residents' rights, because they don't know why, because in my opinion, or whatever. But they, they said back to me that they had the right to do that, because...
But now, I, I, I am not an attorney, so I would have to say, you'd have to ask an attorney if that particular group is having to pay attention to the Open Meetings Act. It doesn't, it, it, it does, I don't know. But I will say this, if, if it is, um, a thing, an entity that is responsible to the Open Meetings Act, they are actually correct. Because the, one of the issues we have is that people come into public, like, a city council meeting, and they tape it without showing that they've taped it.
Yes.
Can they do that? Yes. And they, the Open Meetings Act says that as long as, I, I mean, for example, if somebody came in with a camera right now and put it right smack in the center, we would be entitled to say, please move that to the corner, or please move that to the side, but we could not say, go away. Or turn it off. So, what do communities do to answer this? They tape it themselves, so that if somebody takes a tape and alters it, they can show that, that tape was altered, because they have the original. So, yeah, you have to be, it, the Open Meetings Act is very clear on that.
I have our knowledge, once they start taping, they have to continue taping each meeting they have.
No.
So, it can be selective on which ones they record.
And unfortunately, they can also be selective on what, uh, things they put out.
Meaning that the sensor... We had an hour meeting, they could pull out...
Now, we're talking about... Now, we're talking about the public. Well, that should be recorded then by, you know, what am I saying, tape? I mean, they should, if they couldn't do it by by camera, they could use audio. But the point is, yes, they're entitled to do it. The other thing, the Open Meetings Act, I'll come right back to you. The other thing the Open Meetings Act has made quite clear is that I, as a council member or as a planning board member, may call each of the other planning board members and say, I'm gonna propose X at the next meeting, I hope you'll support me. What I can't say is, and I already talked to planning board members Fred, Mary and Sue, and they're gonna do it too. So I cannot add up, I can one-on-one make that contact, but I can't tell a whole group what the rest of the group is gonna do. So I see a council member smiling at that, so he must have some experience with that. Um, yes.
Uh, so I do not have a work phone, a private work phone. Uh, I just use my, what, like I said, I just use my private personal cell. Does that mean that my personal cell would boil?
Yes, it certainly does.
Okay.
And could be used in court. So that you might wanna see, talk to the company, suggest that you should have a work phone, get a work phone. Yes.
Does the same order apply that we're using now apply to organizations?
Not, not the part I'm talking about right now, which is the Open Meetings Act. But the other rules we're gonna talk about, yes. Yes, they definitely apply to nonprofits and foundations, all kinds um religious institutions, if they adopt Roberts rules. But the point that we have to, that we're working on now is to understand that even before we get to Roberts, there are other rules that take precedence. Um, Roberts doesn't have the same rules as the Open Meetings Act does. But we have to go by the Open Meetings Act because that is bigger than Roberts and that's where we have to start. Um, we, after, so that's the Open Meetings Act and the Freedom of Information Act, so pay attention. Um. How, is it okay, I just have this question again, which is asked frequently. We're all gonna go to the ballgame together, the whole council, is that okay? Absolutely, yes, it is okay if you go to the ballgame together. Just don't talk, just don't talk about city business. I know a community where they, whole council, after the meeting, goes to a a bar, actually, and they have a table that's in the front window that's visible to everybody and they all sit together and say things like, how about those lions? So they talk about everything else, but they don't talk about city business. So as long as you're not deliberating toward a decision, happily spend time together. Many communities um all go, take the whole council to Michigan Municipal League meetings and spread out to cover all the workshops. Again, they just don't talk city business. And you, you could say, well, in their mind, they're deliberating toward a decision because they're thinking of something they're gonna bring up at the next council meeting. That's good. And if they wanna tell one other council member who's there, you should listen to this, that's good. But let's not, you know, just really be careful with your electronics and what you have and what you put up. Now, we won't even go to the use of Facebook and et cetera, other social media. That is being so misused across the state by council members and by people who are elected and appointed to boards um as a tool to try to gain campaigning. I mean, that's campaigning, sure. You know, that's, it's, it's, but it's well-used by candidates as it should be, but it should not be used by elected and appointed officials. Next, we have the city or village charter. Now, Michigan is a home rule city. That means what rules you have in your charter, in your city of Inxter, may not be anything like the rules in the city of Dearborn Heights, which is next door, or cities across the southeastern Michigan. Um, I recently had somebody come call me up. Well, I went to the city council meeting of the city community next door and they're doing it all wrong. I said, I said, maybe not, did you read their charter? Now, I noticed in your charter, um, the mayor has voice and vote, but not veto. And yet, a city not too far away, Dearborn, the mayor has 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 veto, that's Dearborn. He has the veto power. Um, it varies from community to community. Some communities where it's a council manager form of government and everybody is elected at large and there is no strong mayor, everybody has voice and vote and nobody has any veto. So just know that, don't make your judgment about, and I'm, and I'm clearly saying city. Don't make a judgment about another city based on your city. Yes, yes, as a matter of fact, and it's not unusual, I I'm sympathetic with you, but it's not unusual to make changes and then when you implement them, you go, whoops. You know, it's not unlike bylaws of your organization. You know, you change the bylaws and you think you fixed something and then you try to implement that and you discover it's in conflict with another part of the bylaws that you already had. So, I mean, I I do a lot of nonprofits and that's one of the things I tell them. You have to actually start Article One and read the whole thing when you make changes. Don't make just a change to Article Seven because you don't know that it's gonna conflict with something you already have in Article Two. So yes, the best thing to do is amendments. And you know, it's the same process, you prepare them, send them to the Attorney General's office for approval and then you can put them on the ballot. Um, so the, but I've mentioned that cities because generally speaking, villages and townships are pretty much all the same. Because there is a general law Village Act, which sets the things for villages, and there is a general, there is legislation regarding townships. So when the phone rings and I get a quick call, oh, we're in trouble. I I say, are you a township or a village? And the answer is yes, I'll say, go ahead and ask me your question. If you're a city, I'm gonna say, well, we can take a stab at it, but unless you get your city charter, I can't be sure that I can give you the right answer. So that's important to know. And and by the way, you should celebrate the fact that we have home rule in Michigan and that you can put things in your charter that may vary with others. Next, we have any ordinances. Then the council rules of order, um, which I did not see that you have council rules of order. You might wanna consider that, they're very helpful. I particularly like them when they deal with the issue of appointments because they standardize how appointments are made. You are members of the Michigan Municipal League and there's a person named Mary Charles, who you contact there and tell them about the size of your city, about what kind of structure you have. And she will send you other people's, um, other cities' uh rules of order for their councils and you can get an idea of what's a good, what's a good one. Yeah, that's, that's a good way to to get them, no use inventing wheel. Um, then, so council rules of order are good. If you do have bylaws for your planning board and that's very good and they're, they're well-written, they're very interesting, they are. Um, it it does, does say in them that parliamentary procedure use Roberts rules of order revised, except where contrary to Michigan statutes, Inxter ordinances or these bylaws. So it's important to know that you can put in your own bylaws, things that are in conflict with Roberts, and that's perfectly all right. One of the things that's in Roberts, it says, the maker of the motion name is in the minutes, the second is not. I can tell you, there is not a city, village or township in the state that doesn't put both the name of the maker of the motion and the second in the minutes. And um, because that's how we do it. So you can have practices, even rules, that are different from Roberts and then you use Roberts for the rest of the book. It's the part, Roberts is kind of the fill-in-the-blanks. And um it, who is Robert? This is helpful to know. He was an engineer and a general. So what people are, when they start to study with me, um, they are always rather, oh, Coco, this is so, I couldn't possibly, there's no way I'm gonna figure that's all out. And then after a while, they say, you know, this isn't really that hard. And I said, don't tell everybody. This is my business, don't tell them. It's not really that hard because the man is an engineer and a military man. So once you get the hang of it, it just all flows wrong. On the sheet I'm gonna give you, you're gonna see what I mean. So he was invited to chair, it was a church meeting, and he did so poorly, he was incredibly embarrassed. And he said, this is in the eighteen seventies, he looked around and he said, well, who has a good rulebook? Well, this House and the Senate uses Jefferson's Manual, written by Thomas Jefferson. But that was, as far as he was concerned, that was too legislative. He needed something that was better for everyday people and nonprofit organizations to use. And so he wrote this first manual and it was the publisher who called it Roberts Rules. He did not give it that title. And of course, this is, this is the newest one, this is the twelfth edition. It makes absolutely no difference in how you are all conducting your business. There are seventeen changes in here. If you don't sleep well, I actually do a workshop about the seventeen changes and you won't last more than ten minutes. Because there are all the kinds of things that make parliamentarians do little happy dances and the rest of you go, what? Okay. So that's Roberts and that's who is, I, is he the only one? No, there's one other really well-known one, which is called the Standard Code. Some people still call it Sturgis from who studied it in the old days, which I I like too. I use both, both when I get questions. And there's some things in Sturgis I kind of use instead of what Roberts does. But the point is, either one of them will really be a good guide for your organization. Why do most people use Roberts? Because it has more stuff that goes with it, like, like the smaller book, like the gold sheet, like the Roberts Rules for Dummies, I hate the book, but you know, it's, it works. Um, so why use parliamentary procedure anyway? And uh, I, I confess that the Wayne State Student Senate is my favorite group. And so every year when we go on retreat, um, well, actually, we don't go on retreat anymore because about five years ago, the incoming president said to me, I don't wanna go on a retreat. And I said to him, well, that's okay, but that is where you set your goals. Oh, he said, I wanna have the meeting, I wanna call it an advance because we're not going back, we're going forward. So every year now, we have an advance, you are welcome to use that title if it works for you. Um, the um, and I said, well, people always say to me, why use parliamentary procedure? And this is their list, they said, to get down to four items. It enables members to accomplish, of course, in their case, the student senate goals, but the municipalities' goals, it is a recognizable format for a meeting. So what, people say to me, well, we don't use Roberts rules. Well, what do you do in the meeting? Well, we make motions and vote. Well, that's really all it is. Um, it introduces motions that lead to decision-making. Um, the student south newspaper, the South End, is still at Wayne and still wanting to report that the student senate isn't doing anything. So it's important for them to actually make motions and do things. And of course, it prescribes minutes that record action. The basic objectives of parliamentary law are only these four on the next slide. Accomplish the objectives for which the group is organized, expedite business, ensure justice and equality to all and maintain order. That's really all, the whole goal is. Um. Some, some council rules of debate. The maker of the motion is entitled to speak first, yes. We'll talk about some motions you can make and some things that can happen. But basically, the bottom line is, get a motion on the floor. Most of the problems that people describe in their meetings are when people are just talking, talking, talking. So a woman approached me not too long ago, for a nonprofit, and she said, nothing's happening in my organization. Can you help us? And I said, well, why don't you send me a couple of copies of your recent minutes? And there was this long pause on the phone and she said, minutes? So I kinda knew we were gonna be in some difficulty at the start. And um, when I finally did get them, I said, you have no motions. She said, well, we operate by consensus. And I said, of course, how's that going for you? She said, well, you're always saying things like, weren't we going to? Because if you don't make a motion, put it on the floor, get it voted on and add in who is gonna, you know, who's gonna put up the signs for the bake sale and who's gonna go buy the carnations. Afterwards, you, six months later, you're saying, weren't we gonna have a combination bake and carnation sale? Well, the answer is, you never vote. And so the answer to most groups is, they're just sitting around talking instead of somebody actually putting a motion on the floor.
And if there's not an over one, a one over the other, um, as to why, kinda why is it?
It's, it's the importance, as he says, um, ensure justice and equality to all, and that is the fairness of voting. No, that's a, very influenced by John Calhoun and his writings on the majority. Um, so so then, we'll, we'll work on some more details for you on how to move your meetings forward. Well, and, and we'll talk about rules you can have about that. You can have rules about how long people can talk and how often they can talk. Um, the maker of the motion is entitled to speak first. So if a motion is made, seconded, stated by the chair, it is proper for the chair to turn to the maker and say, would you like to speak to your motion? After that, everyone is welcome to speak. A member may not speak against his own motion, but may vote against. How would you think that that could happen? Very often, you hear your motion debated and you say, this is not a good idea. And so you vote against it. Or it was a motion to buy benches for the park and somebody moved to amend by inserting pink before benches. That hasn't happened to be your city color. So you said, then the motion, the amendment passed, now you're gonna vote against your motion because you never had in mind pink benches. So sometime, things can happen and you vote. The other way is, you've made the motion and you've asked to withdraw it. And the, no, the body said no. I have actually had that happen in a very large convention where someone made a motion, came to the microphone, said it wasn't what she meant. Wasn't what she meant to say. But the chair said, is there any objection to the member withdrawing the motion? And the body said, big objection, may not be what she meant, but they liked it. And so, and later she passed and later she came and told me she voted against it. Well, she should have, you know, so that's how that could happen. Um, oh, this is a big one. Now, as I mentioned, I'm the parliament chair for all kinds of groups, nonprofits, civic groups. Um, homeowners, which by the way, makes city councils look very tame by comparison. Homeowners, HOAs, there's the whole category of them, it's called. Everything from neighborhood organizations to condominium associations. That's, that's where the tough stuff is. But they don't stick to the topic. And we, in local government, are best at it. We can start with those benches and then talk about where they've been replaced. But don't put them too near the the street. Are we gonna use sand or salt this year? Well, now, do we have salt left from last year? Well now, do we have salt left from last year? How much did that cost us anyway? Do you see what is happening? We do that all the time and we are so good at it. We can get so far off the topic, nobody knows, so somebody has to be a monitor in the group and say. Can we get back to the motion on the floor? Can we get back to the topic? Yeah, well, no, Jermaine is, the, the conversation is not Jermaine. So that's something that you really have to pay attention to, so often, that's what happens in your meetings where it goes away. Everybody starts talking about something different. It is definitely the chair. And let me speak for just a moment about being a parliamentarian. A parliamentarian advises, a parliamentarian never rules. And if we have a good working relationship, which I do with the chair. We have discussed in advance how I'm gonna let them know how things are going. Some presidents like to have me write big on a piece of paper. Um, everybody really likes, I have three five by seven cards, one is red, one is yellow and one is green. If the green one is on top, the chair's nose, just keep right on it. If I move and put the yellow one on top, that means we're okay for right now, but I'm seeing something that may be a problem. Pay attention. If I put the red one on the top, the chair says, there's no objection, the assembly will stand at ease, which means. I've gotta ask the parliamentarian what's going on. I consider a national convention a success if I have never spoken at the microphone. Never spoken to anybody but the chair, or I also have hours when I, when the parliamentarian is in like Charlie Brown. I sit at a little table and anybody can come and ask me anything, mostly it's how to write motions, but um, so I. I am, unless you have an assignment to the parliamentarian, in the student senate. The parliamentarian is assigned to write down the names of the people who've raised their hands to call on them in order. That's, that's their role, so the answer is the chair, parliamentarian should say to the chair. By whatever system they use. The topics of, you should call for the, call for the body to get back to it. Advice. Do they always follow parliamentarian's advice? No. And if they don't, what are your options? Well, if the chair has a very good reason for not doing it, you discuss it afterwards. If the chair just has a huge agenda that you, the parliamentarian thinks that they are doing it, managing it in the wrong way. Then it's up to the parliamentarian to suggest that they seek elsewhere, advice elsewhere.
So we would love to have you at every one of our meetings, right? We don't, unfortunately. Is there anyone else that can help facilitate following Roberts Rules?
I think that actually the chair just pays attention to what's being offered, that they'll do fine. I, I really find that most groups do perfectly well on their own. Because once you get the sense of you're gonna take turns. Nobody's gonna talk over anybody else. You know, you get the basics down, usually things smooth out pretty well. And most of the groups that I go to all the time. Have, have an issue. Have, have some sort of a conflict that I try to help them resolve. But sometimes that's not possible. Okay, next, all remarks must be addressed to and through the chair. Numero uno, if you are a chair of an organization. And the first thing you wanna do is just say to the group, all comments and questions come through me. If you want to ask the treasurer a question. You say to the chair, excuse me, I would like to ask the treasurer a question. If you want to ask another council member a question, you say, council member, to the mayor. Mayor, I would like to ask another council member a question, that is, you know what, it makes it so smooth. So, because as soon as you get two people talking like this to each other, I can tell you, this experience is not gonna end well. Somebody's gonna be mad. And the other thing is, as soon as you have people talking directly to one another, again, you've lost. You know, one of the advantages of the student senate's parliamentarian's role. Is that then you don't get into one-on-one debates, because if they've taken down, who wants to speak next? And you spoke, you probably aren't gonna get another turn till six people later when the subject may be quite different by then. Um, it's not unlike being in the national convention, going to the mic and standing there, and by the time you get your turn. They're not even talking about what you got in line to talk about. So that's the advantage of people taking turns and some chairs, especially in nonprofits, will say. Thank you, Mary, now the next person sitting next to you is Harry. Harry, did you have something to say? And we'll actually go around the room. This not only lets everybody take turns, but it also has the advantage. That Harry, who hardly ever says anything in a meeting, is gonna discover that he indeed has a voice. That he's gonna get called on if he wishes to speak. But the point is taking turns like that and also. Every, but every group has somebody who talks too much. I think it might be a state law, so. They have, this allows you to, to limit, no one gets to speak a second time until everyone who wants a turn. Gets to speak up first. City councils, so for a long time, city councils understood that the Open Meetings Act lets you put a time limit on the public. You know, get your two minutes or three minutes or whatever it is. Um, you can't put a time limit on the overall time. You cannot say, we will now have public comment for fifteen minutes or two hours. You have to let them go as long as they want, because you can limit each person's time, but not the overall time. And if you would like to see a long city council meeting, watch Ann Arbor. They have citizens come, sometimes those meetings go to two o'clock in the morning. Public comment, because you just have to allow it now, but city councils did not think that they could put limitations on themselves. Until they discovered that they could. So with very many city councils have the rule that no council member gets to speak a second time until everybody got it first. Some councils put actual time limits, no council member may speak more than five minutes at a time. Um, no, and others have, there are some communities that have on any given topic, each council member may speak only once. They just want the people to make the decision of what they want to do, to know, to be prepared in advance. Um, so this takes a two-thirds vote. So a little thing to tuck in the back of your mind is anytime you take away rights, it takes a two-thirds vote. So you're limiting people, so, and you know, it's also limits that councils have rules about. Uh, cell phones. You have a cellphone, it must be on vibrate only and you may only answer calls during council meetings that are emergencies. And of course, most council members know each other well enough to know afterwards. Whether that call was an emergency or you just should bring something home for dinner. Okay. Uh, personal comments about other individuals should be avoided at some given, yes. Yes, two-thirds of those present and voted, unless the body says otherwise. So there are some councils that have rules. That it's a majority vote or two-thirds vote of those seated, which means all those elected. So if you have a council of nine and five are present. Need all votes. Need all, if it was all five. It was two-thirds vote, so it depends, and some councils say. It, it would say even, it's, it's counts everybody who was elected, not just who's there, not, not just who's there if you have a forum. So if you have a forum present, um, some communities have the rule in their charter. That the number of people. Um, that constitutes the quorum is also the minimum number for anything to be adopted. So in those communities, you might hear at planning board, because remember the rules all sit down. A planning board member in a community like that might say to the petitioner. Um, we only have four planning board members here tonight. You will need the affirmative vote of all four of them for this to be adopted. You don't have that rule, but I'm just saying, in commu, in Ohio, it's a state law. But here, it's, it's again, whole cities, it's city by city by city as to what it takes for something to be adopted. What does it seem to you then? Majority vote of those present? Three to one pass? See, that's what, that varies, there are other communities where three to one. Would not, by their charter, so that's always why, you see why the hierarchy is, we don't go to Roberts first. We go to all these other documents that are important to us, and if it's not covered there, then we go to Roberts. Yes. Right, so two-thirds of those of the entire committee, no proxies allowed. That, by the way, is not uncommon um, in universities on their faculty meetings. That's, but it basically what it says is, y'all come. Better show up. Um, personal comments about other individuals should be avoided, obviously also. Members are seldom referred to by name rather by title. And that varies from community to community. Uh, some smaller communities do prefer to refer to each other by first names, council members or planning board members. Others are much more formal and prefer council member and, and commissioner. Um, I, I am a fan of the more formal, I think that it just gives you, your community a more professional look if you're more formal. Um, then. No member may comment adversely on any prior act of the body, and this is getting to people. Who I remember that, you know, we shouldn't have done this, we shouldn't have done that, it's water, it's water under the dam, all gone. So here are some rules. No person should speak a second time on a motion as long as another is requesting recognition to speak for a first time on the issue of motion. And as I say, this was thinking of um, public comment, but it also could apply to um, a city council members if they wish to adopt it. Remarks should be limited to two minutes, now I'm a big two minutes fan. Um, I get teased about this a lot by the Michigan Municipal League Legal Staff, but I'm a big two minutes fan and here's the assignment I'm gonna give you. Give yourself on your watch, two minutes to convince somebody of something. You'll be able to say everything you want in two minutes. If I give you three minutes. You're gonna tell it to me again. That's all you do. Two communities that I have been able to dissuade in the past two years to go from five minutes to three. And now they're even thinking that maybe they should do two. So, yeah, and I couldn't tell from watching your meeting, how are you timing people? No, that's something that I've seen a lot more in other communities, is the countdown timer. I, I'm a big fan because. Um, I do a lot of timing of debates as the elections get near. And if I pulled up the thirty-second card. The speaker, the candidates really like that, because now they can wind it up. Um, and when you have a countdown timer, they know that their time is running out and they finish it themselves. If they don't have a ti, if they don't see the time and you have to say, stop, that's it, or that's enough time. That's disruptive, the person to the meeting, so they don't, they're not that expensive and I really think that they're great. You could even get them, so it countdowns, counts down on the screen. Um. The community colleges in particular, who's that? They actually, they have the screens up and they can count down at a time, so everybody could see, but it's important that. The elected members and appointed members see it and most importantly, the petitioners. Um, so two minutes, most, by the way, in Michigan, most common is three minutes for the public. Um, maybe so something about public comment time. That is all over the place. What we know is the Open Meetings Act requires that at any public meeting. Public comment is on the agenda. It does not specify where. And. It, some communities, because they have a lot of people who wanna talk. Have at the beginning of the meeting, meeting open to the public for items on the agenda, that's what you do in planning this thing, yeah. And at the end, open to the public for items not on the agenda. That's a very popular one in places where they have a lot of people who come and speak. So, because it just, it lets people who wanna comment on things that you're gonna talk about, have the say upfront. And then, because the business of the city is the most important thing, it puts things that are not so important at the end. Um, I mean, they may be extremely important to the person who's speaking, but it's not for the fiduciary responsibility. Um, now, one of the things that's happened, and this is a very scary thing I'm gonna say, so, so, it's okay. Um, that I've seen that has changed a lot is more communities have moved to simply asking for public comment on every issue. So when the item comes on the agenda, just say that anyone wants to speak on this. And, and then in the end, they have items for, on the, not on the agenda, so yes, I know. A very scary thing for people, but that is what I, I am seeing that trend admit. Because people say, I want to hear. The report. From. Planning director. Before I make my comments, because my comments might be canceled by the report they're gonna give on. On property X that's up for consideration for zoning. I wanna hear the report, one of the things we know about public meetings is that. Public doesn't come every time. Don't have the same people. It's not like other things where we have the same people coming to our meetings. Here, you know, these people who are coming into the planning meeting where you're gonna do something to a piece of property, they've never been before. But now it's near them. That you're gonna put a stop sign in? These people have never been before because you never put one in on their street. So you always have to be careful to explain the rules, this is how we do things. Either with a little slip by the back door that explains how you get heard and how much time you get, or by somebody saying something, so, um. It's, you know, it's just convenient to have everybody at public comment know what they're saying, so. The other issue is. Do you, what, what public comment is allowed? Some communities have very strong uh, rules about no campaigning during public comment. Um, so they don't want people coming in and saying, no, my candidate is just great, that's who you should vote for. Other communities, I know one that has a rule, if a question can be answered at city hall between nine and five, you may not ask. And so they, there are, the biggest rule I see all the time is. Councilors ask or, permissions are asked not to respond during public comment. You should simply say, thank you. Because there's no real way to enter, not enter into debate. Right. One community that I know of says, there'll be no response during public comment. But during commissioner comments, if any commissioner wishes to respond to a person, they may. So, you know, I'm, I'm just letting you know that it's kind of across the board, but the tendency is to not enter into debate with the public. There's, there's just no, there's no value.
RC council had a meeting and they wanted to hear from members of the public on an agenda item, and they didn't wanna wait till the end of the day. And there's a public hearing, how can we allocate?
You would have to make a change in the rules that would allow public comment at the beginning for items on the agenda.
Would that be an amendment to that agenda only, or is it?
I would make that a general rule. General rule, because you really wanna let the public know when they can be heard. You know, in Detroit, where we had just common council meetings every day. it was very hard for the citizens in Detroit to know when an issue would come up. And so, then when they went to committees, everybody was very happy, because if you had, for example, a housing question, you knew that that was Tuesday mornings was the, the committee that discussed housing. So that, that prepped it up, so they knew when to go, because you really want the public to be able to come and address the issue that they care about. So you'd have to make that, I think, a general change. The council would have to just debate it, discuss it, and decide what works, because it is hard to have people. You see, if you only have it at the end, then by that time, you may have already voted on the issue. And they also waited for that to happen.
With agendas, and it don't need exact, because the agenda has to be completely public, and what if they, well, someone wants to add something?
Super, super question. The Open Meetings Act never mentions agendas. And waiting must be posted, it must be noticed. But everybody's got into the habit of publishing agendas, school boards, city councils, of every, all kinds of elected and appointed bodies. But the fact is, it's not required. Is it great transparency? It's super transparency, and of course, on planning, sometimes you have zoning issues, those must be noticed. You know, there are certain must notice things, but in general, no, you don't have to. So, yes, when you get to this meeting, it is perfectly appropriate to amend the agenda. However, don't put something on that the citizens don't know about and vote on it. That's just a big, that'll get you in all kinds of difficulty. So, but do you want to put on the agenda that we have a discussion about the property at XYZ? If there's a majority vote of the members present to put an item on the agenda, yes. Also, by the same token, the, can be reported. The information for item four is not available, I move we strike item four from the agenda, and that can be done. It's best if the member who wants to put something on an agenda says at the previous meeting, I move that the next agenda include an item about such and such. But the fact is, no. So, the question often comes to me regarding closed meetings. Does it have to show on the agenda that we're going to have a closed meeting? No. If you know you're going to have one, it's handy to have it there, but it's not required, because you could be in the middle of your meeting and suddenly go, you know what, I don't think we should be talking about this. I'm going to go into a closed session for the purposes of, and by the way, I really liked the planning board bylaws, they say what we know is true, which is you put in the section for which you're going to go into the closed meeting. And they, they specify that in there. But, so, so it doesn't have to be. Also, do you have to go into a closed meeting within the confines of a meeting? No. The reason, if you know you're going to go into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing labor negotiation, the motion can be, I move we go into closed session for the purposes of labor negotiation as included in the act of such and such, after the adjournment of this meeting. Because you know if it's labor negotiations, you're not going to come back. So, and, so depending, and I know communities who say, I move that we have a closed meeting thirty minutes before the next council. So there are all different ways to handle that, but the important thing is, need to vote, I'm going into a closed meeting. What vote is it? Well, to tell you the truth, the different six provisions that we in elected government can go on, under, vary in requirements. So pretty much everybody just votes by two thirds, just because if we go, go by two thirds, they'll get one. Yes. Oh, we get that question all the time at the league. How much can a person say about an issue or another person? And the answer is, unfortunately, once you're a working official at a city or an elected official or an appointed official, there are not that many limits on what they can do. They cannot threaten you. Anything that is a threat is, is not, not allowed. But they can say, you know, she's taking money under the table again. Nobody said that about me, I love the again. But the, the point is, if you have a good chair, the chair will simply say, that is not appropriate. And especially if they go after an employee, that's when you really, that's actually much worse than going after the elected or appointed official. And that should be stopped as fast as it can. That's not an appropriate comment, that's not, this is not the form. My First Amendment rights, yeah. Yes, you're right, it, it's a very difficult area, and unfortunately, right now with social media the way it is, people are saying outrageous things, they're totally untrue about all kinds of things all the time, and there's really no, no way to govern that. And so, people think that, you know, now they're carrying it over into the public arena and thinking, well, if I can say this on Facebook, I can say this at city council. You're quite right, it's a very difficult question, but a strong chair speaking out, but shutting them down? No, if I come to your council meetings and I act really rude and really terrible, swear and just carry on, you can escort me from the room tonight, but I get to come back next time and be a jerk again. So you can't plan somebody forever, you can simply remove them from the current meeting. Not, not unless they say something that's blatantly threatening or offensive. Or offensive. Anything that's, that casts any discriminatory comment, that can be shut down. Nobody's, nobody's saying that can't be done. But anything that just says so and so is a jerk. Now, how, whether. That's all right. But now, the question is, are you still having people come by Zoom? So different communities have taken different approaches to this. Some have said, we're going to continue to have the public come on Zoom, even though we're in the public. But many communities, and it's growing, are saying, enough of that. Put on your mask and come to the meeting. So, simply because too many people got their press, if you will, I'd be honored. Let's see. Of course, this, oh, the speaker may be asked but not required to state the name and any other requested identifying information. And that's the kind of statement that makes municipal attorneys gather in small groups and argue. I noticed that you have a sign in procedure. And I, that seems to be working for you, yeah. And can you sign in even during the meeting, or does it have to be before the meeting? So, yeah, that seems to be working. But that's, it's not, it's not required, though. It was interesting, and this will put a date on it. We were holding the hearings for the development of the new Tiger Stadium, so this is years ago. And it was in the great big auditorium, that Detroit City Hall, and I happened to be sitting near the deputy clerk, and she was having people fill out cards, speak, and she said to a woman, you'll be Jane Doe number two. So this was a person who did not want to give their name, it was the second woman who did not want to give her name, and that was perfectly all right. So, it's, if people, and the other thing is, sometimes people, they want to ask it to see if you really live here. That doesn't count. That's why it's not called resident comment. Or homeowner's comments, or anything else, it's called a public comment, because it is anybody. Because you could have an issue that's, um, let's see, Dearborn Heights is a neighbor community, you could have an issue that's right in the building, right next to, and they want to come. So, it's just public comment. And, of course, remarks must be confined to the pending question. Speaker should address the chair and not enter into debate with other members of the audience or other members of council. That's why we always go through the chair, because we never speak directly to somebody else, we always go through the chair and take turns. And I always like this one, during debate, the chair shall make an effort to alternate between supporting and opposing arguments. I always like that one, because I can sometimes never tell if the person spoke for or against. And the other thing is, don't have anybody come and say, I know we get three minutes each, but I've got four people here, so I'd like to do their twelve minutes. No, no, that, that never works, because after you do that, one of those four people is going to say, Fred, you didn't tell the part about. You didn't make my point. So, none of that. And there's no yielding. You can't say, I got three minutes, I only used two, I'm going to give my other minute to Fred, no, there's none of that. That always starts up after the Republican and Democratic conventions, because people are seeing, people, the great state of Senate, you know, Senator from the great state of North Carolina yields his time. No, there's no yielding. See, here, here's the public comment. If a question from the public may be answered simply, go ahead. Counsel is no obligation to respond to questions during public comment. Resist debate during public comment, the presiding officer may state, your comments are noted, thank you. There, you know, a good example of this is a consent calendar. When you take an item off the consent calendar, you're supposed to just say, item one A. That's it. You're not supposed to say why you want it off, or what you want to do with it, because it's not supposed to be a conversation, you're just taking it off the consented calendar for the rest of consent agenda to be voted on in one vote. As soon as you allow somebody to say why they're taking it off, somebody has to say why it's on, somebody has, you know, there's no. And somebody came to the microphone during public comment and said, when is the next extra fun fair? That could be a single answer. But, when are you going to have the extra fun fair at the same location? That's a discussion. So really, consent calendar is meant to be taken, used off, and then put them on the next item on the agenda, which is items removed from the consent calendar, and deal with them. And the same thing with public comment, just try to say thank you. Well, I think we need to jump up and down a little bit and then do some motions. And we'll pass out the next set of sheets, and it's, let's come back at eight o'clock. And think of questions, think of motions that you make in your meetings that don't work for you. Thanks for all of you who are asking questions, that really helps me know what it is you want to know. I had looked in your, your, um, basically the, for public, for public, um, public hearings, you'll discuss here. Shall be established by the director, by the chairperson. Okay, so I went to the M M L. Have the, have the members of the.
To be seen on the floor.
I should tell her about, in Oakland County, we have something called the Women's Network. Does women who live in office, or who like to be in office, or who think other women should be in office. So go take a look at us. It's not, it's, I have to tell you, completely non, non, a lot of judges are around us, and you know, they have to be very, very. Oh, okay. Yeah, and, um, it, it really, I mean, it's not uncommon, especially this time of the year, where one of our breakfasts, well, people running against each other. And, and then, and everybody stood with that. No, so, it's fine. Um, that's because I brought it from the National Association of Parliament, and they sold them down. Oh, I, you know, I had that one, but I think that would magnify it, I was to go with it. Ready? Yeah, it's really, it's really great. Okay, here we go. Now we're gonna talk about motions. So get your gold sheet. In front of you. I'm gonna push one room to that. Example of a typical meeting, just because I know everyone in this room is a part of a nonprofit, whether it's a religious institution, or the PTA, or something, and this is what a typical nonprofit looks like in their meeting. Example of a typical meeting, and let me really push the word typical. Your meeting can be arranged in any way you want. This is just a typical agenda, and everything involved is what the chair says. After determining that a quorum is present, and the quorum is listed in your bylaws, the presiding officer rises, waits for signals for quiet, and says, the meeting will come to order, and if you have a gavel, you get to use it now. But you only get to use it again at the end. So this banging on the table has got to go. I, at the, the, only two national conventions since kind of the end of COVID, but they both use the bells to bring people back, you know, like in the theater, when it's, when the intermission's over. That's what they've been using. I think they discovered that yelling at people and banging, see, they didn't have somebody with a great loud voice like our chair, which would have, which would have worked, but they, they did that, so. Opening ceremonies, and I give you this because this is the best list. If you are having a meeting, and you're, and you're in charge of setting it up, this is the order things happen. Based on the group, religious patriotic and customary rituals may be included. If given, the invocation, the national anthem, and the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States are arranged in that order. Inspirational messages follow patriotic exercises. And to be 100% correct on the agenda, it should say, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States. And I love the agenda, I especially love it says, previous business. Um, I'll tell you why. Roll call, if customary, and the secretary will call the roll of members. Reading and approval of the minutes, member, in, in the old, old days, people actually read the minutes out loud. Fortunately, we don't do that anymore. Um, but does anybody read the minutes? I don't think so. I don't think so. Um, I have, I am secretary currently for three different organizations. The first thing I would say is, if you put my minutes next to each other, the only thing you, they, they look entirely different, the three sets. Because that's, that's, that is these organizations, how they do minutes. The one thing you would notice is, they're all short. Minutes are what was done, not what was said, which is why I complimented the clerk on her minutes. What was done, not what was said. Um, then, the second thing is, you would say, you would notice that I don't put, who seconded the motions in any of my minutes, because I do it according to Roberts. Now, I've been for one group, I've been the secretary for six years, and they meet monthly. Has anyone ever said to me, you didn't put in the seconds to the motions? Never. That's why I think nobody's. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, the minutes are approved as read, written. With any corrections, the secretary will make the corrections. If there are no further corrections, the minutes are approved as corrected. You notice that they don't, in this group, vote. That's a difference that I see in elected and appointed bodies. Your minutes are such an important legal record, I approve of voting on them. Just a simple, just a majority vote. So minutes are what was done, not what was said, and by the way, that's an exact quote from the book. What was done, not what was said. So the planning board is the most common one that will say to me, but we wanna have really complete minutes. You know, so we can look back. And then, of course, I always say, and when was the last time anybody looked back? And the answer is, not for a long time. Well, we want them to be our history, so that's something else they go. Now, in fact, when it comes to planning board, what you decided even five years ago at the intersection of, what, Michigan and, uh, what is it, Trobridge up here, whichever it is, that wouldn't be the same thing today, because there were different buildings there, there were different traffic. So I'm not even sure that looking back is ever valuable. If it is to be your history, you should be doing a yearly historian's report, like your organization, where at the end of the year, somebody writes down all the programs that happened all the year, all the activities that happened all the year, that's what you do in a nonprofit. So once a year, you write a historian's report and you vote on it. You don't make the minutes, your historian's report. I gotta ask you though, what is what was done, not what was said? Motions. Action. So, now, at this end, as clerk can attest, if we were in the Michigan Association, which, we would discuss minutes for at least nine minutes. But here, we're done. Reports of boards, officers, standing special committees, called on only if they have reports to make. So as the chair, you should find out in advance, does, do the members have the, have reports? Now, one of the things that happens in nonprofits is, you forget at the beginning of the year to tell everybody that primary is their board membership, secondary is their assignment. So if you're on the board of directors, because you're the chair of the nominating committee, but you don't do that work until the spring, you still are obligated as a board member to attend all member meetings. People forget to tell them what the board responsibilities are, and that is an important orientation. People have to remember that first, they are board members, secondly, they are the newsletter editor, or the chairman of the study groups, or whatever, depending on your nonprofit, all the different assignments you have. So have that board orientation, um, and, and gather around, do it. Um, treasurer's report is never adopted, because unlike the minutes, you were here, and you can vote on them, because you heard, you were there at the meeting, and you say, yes, that's an accurate report. You can't vote on the treasurer's report, because you don't know that that was actually accurate. And it's really important these days, and I'm sure you've noticed in the newspapers, as I have, and actually, two of my regular clients have had significant investments in the past two years. People are, and they're both nonprofits, um, and people are just not paying enough attention to their, again, what about responsibility, which is fiduciary, to know how the numbers are going. And you also notice maybe a phrase you don't know. Instead, a financial review or auditor's report is adopted annually, and the words that may be new are financial review. Now, many nonprofits that don't have a lot of money, typically, an annual budget less than 20,000, um, are doing an annual review. Partially, it's because all of us have gotten much better about managing money. So we're likely to have in our organization, three members who actually know how to manage money, and we can appoint them to do a financial review, always remembering that the treasurer should not be one of those three people. And you are, yeah. I believe we call that the fox watching the hen house, yes? No, not the chairperson either, you're correct. Three, three independent members. And very often, you can now find somebody in your membership who works at a bank, or is a CPA, or has that kind of financial expertise, and they should go through. And if you are ever invited to be the treasurer of a nonprofit, say no unless there's been a financial review or an audit. Don't take the job on until you know that it's clean, because they'll say later, that was. Exactly, exactly. Yep, you're exactly right. That's what happens, because later they'll say, well, maybe you did that. Exactly, exactly, yeah. Well, you can recruit other members from the community, but they can be members of your group, as long as you can get three independent thinkers. And three's the number I mentioned. Independent thinkers, people who are willing to really take up the checkbook, or whatever you're using, and look at the bank deposits and see if it all matches. Okay, so that, that's what a financial review is, and as I say, in smaller organizations now, that's replacing an auditor's report, because auditor's reports are, tend to be quite expensive. Um, if an officer's report contains a recommendation, another member can make a main motion following the report to adopt the recommendation. Committee members, committee chairs may make motions for recommendations contained in their report. Um, then a word you never see on the agenda, special orders. That's because this is the part where it says, election of the nominating committee, election of officers, report of the bylaws committee, something that happens usually once a year, that's where you put it on your agenda. Then unfinished business and general orders, and the reason I complimented the clerk is because good agendas don't say old business. There is no such thing as old business. Old business is what we already did. It's unfinished business that we're dealing with. So I went to do a workshop for a county clerks association that was there the morning of their meeting. And when I said this, no one like that, because they were generally for the media, so that old business. Unfinished, unfinished. Old businesses is, they, in the 1970, just so you know, how, how important is the change in parliamentary? It's not very, not very. In the 1970 edition, they said, oh, please don't use old business. By my count, that's more than 50 years ago. Please don't use old business, because it's not, it's unfinished business. Well, you still, I say, hardly a month goes by that I don't have somebody send an agenda that says old business. The other thing they said is, it's out of style, but not incorrect to use respectfully submitted. So it's, it's still, you still see it sometimes, but you just properly just sign the bottom and write date adopted. But as again, that's, that's a matter of, some organizations like it, because it's so courteous. I, I judge the high school teams in business office, education clubs, and those groups, and somebody, they have to do minutes, and somebody wrote on them, subjectively submitted. But so often, minutes are. Subjectively submitted. Okay. No, just, just, oh, subjectively submitted, because she, she thought that that. Or what's a, I just eliminated and put secretary's name with the signature, date adopted. Because, and, and remember, with minutes, you always wanna have that draft written over them until they're approved. Um, and you can't change what you wish you had done when you correct the minutes. Um, I, I am always amazed at it, but again, last week, I got a call from someone who wants to amend the minutes to show that he voted in a different way. Change the minutes so that it looks like he voted yes on a motion. This is at a city council. And, yeah. So the minutes are, you can't, you can't rewrite this. It's what, it's what you did, it's what you did, not what you wish you'd done. You can correct them, but you can't correct them to what you wish you had done, instead of what you did do. So he had, he had voted, he had voted no on a motion, and he wanted to correct the minutes and say that he voted yes, but he didn't, he voted no. And I'll tell you, that was, that's an interesting comment, council member, because when COVID first started, there were two situations where the minutes were written, and the person was recorded as having what was written in the minutes that they voted differently than they had. And in both cases, it's because they were still taking voice votes. And once we went to Zoom, we had to go to roll call. And these two, these two different councils had both just gone voicemail, and so the other council members agreed with the council member who said, that's not how I voted, and so they did change the minutes in that case, yes. So you certainly corrected to what was true. You can't correct it to what you wish. Um, then we come to, yes, yes, ma'am.
Could you call for a rego or revisit the conversation at which we began?
No, I, I, but I'm gonna talk about that in a minute, oh, that, that, I changed my mind for a moment.
If you, if we wanna restructure our agenda, because learn from the speaking practices, do we vote on it, or is some?
I don't check. I don't think you do, in which case, if you had general agreement from the group, you could just change it. Yeah, generally speaking, that is the, if there's no objection by the group, and, then you could just change the agenda.
It would be an agenda item to change.
Yes, exactly. Sometimes, unfortunately, some nonprofits have included an agenda in their rules, which is not usually the best way. The other thing is the rules, the one comment I would make is these rules do amend for their changes. They allow for changes. Sometimes people forget to put that in rules, but this one says, the planning commission may suspend any of these rules by unanimous vote of the members present. So that's important. And then we have announcements, the program, and then the adjournment. And as you, in a nonprofit, I really recommend this. First of all, for two reasons. First of all, the program, that gives the opportunity for everybody to think of what they forgot. And you haven't adjourned the meeting yet. So you can still do things after the program. The other thing is, and I again run into this, they adjourned the convention before the banquet. And now nobody can remember who got the awards or what the program was. If they had just waited till at the end of the banquet to adjourn the meeting, the secretary would have put in who got the awards and what the program was. So don't be so quick to think that the, your big annual meeting or your big meeting ends when the business ends. It ends when the meeting ends. And if the meeting includes a program, that is part of it. If it's, if not just the title, and maybe you spoke and you got the awards and that's all. It's not that much, but now you have a record of it. As opposed to trying to find out where were the programs from the the two thousand meeting, because I can't remember if we gave Lulu an award then or not. So. I think new business is the best part of the meeting. There's a statewide organization that meets three times a year. And their new business comes right after treasurer's report. Because it's a statewide meeting, people are coming. By the time they get to new business, everybody's thinking about getting in the car. Everybody's thinking about heading home. So the new stuff, I mean, you listen to all those committee reports until your eyeballs could bounce off the desk. And now it's time for new business and everybody's just thinking, what am I making for dinner or what am I going to pick up on the way home? So this organization has really completely revitalized itself by moving new business up to the front. And they require written committee reports submitted electronically no later than five days before the meeting. And those two things, just those two steps, have turned this organization into a very lively one. So that's, you know, make a thing, remember, I emphasize the word typical. If we were in a national convention and the bylaws committee wanted to add another officer, I would have that way up front. So that the nominating committee, which already has that officer ready to go, if it's adopted, can present that person to be elected right then. So you can adjust the agenda to any way you want. When a community wanted to put in a dog park, anything to do with animals. I bless you, you know. Community right now is doing a vicious dog ordinance. And that has brought out everybody who loves on any dog. And another community that I was at is talking about feral cats and they had no idea how many cats. So, but in any case, this community is going to put in a dog park. And they did not adjust their agenda accordingly. And you're asking about people coming and having their item on the agenda at the end. That happened the first meeting and they were, the people were just ringing the room. And it's unfortunately, they meet at the Parks and Recs building and they had, always kept their table like right in the middle and just sat around it. And now they were surrounded like, they said they felt like the Christians and the lions did. So we changed the agenda and put the dog park right after the pledge, religions. Okay, now, making a motion, front page. That's what we mostly do. We just make motions. We do sometimes other motions a little bit, but mostly it's making a good motion, getting it out there. A member rises when no one has the floor, or in the case of your body, raises their hand, whatever you do to get recognition from the chair. Then to make the motion, I move that or I move to. And I really like the fact that most of your motions are pre-written out there. That's excellent, that they've given thought to them beforehand. You can always change it, you can always amend it when you're getting ready to do it. But I think that's a sign of a good organization, when the motions are prepared in advance. After the motion makes the, member makes the motion, somebody says second. And I noticed that in the city council meetings, they say support all the time. But the clerk writes second. Which is of course correct. Why don't I like support? Because it implies that you're for it. And you don't have to be for a motion to support it. In fact, there might, might be, I had this not too long ago in another community, where something has been around for years, just kind of hanging out there and nothing's been done about it. And I said, put it on the floor and vote no. So the person who seconded it definitely was not in favor of it. Didn't speak in favor of it, does it need to? The seconder, once they say I seconded, there are no obligation. And it voted down. So get in the habit of saying second, just so you know, you don't have to support it. I'm not saying the word support is wrong. I'm just saying it gives the wrong impression. You might just want to say second. Because if there is no second, that means there's no motion. All the second does is say, somebody else wants to talk about it. That's all it says. And if nobody else, if your group is ten members and nobody else wants to talk about it, you shouldn't go along with the one person who wants to bring it up, who may actually bring it up a lot. And with the intention, and then because there's a kind person who seconds it, suddenly you have to talk about it. But if nobody seconds it, you simply say, there is no motion, the motion is dead, the motion. So. That's a. Second is the correct thing to say. Second is, as I said, I didn't say support was wrong. I just said it doesn't give the right meaning. The right meaning is somebody else is willing to talk about it. So then, then the most important part of all, for all of you who are chairs, anything, anything, you have to say what the motion is. You have to say, if you're in a meeting and somebody says, what are we voting on anyway? Chair, chances are the chair did not state the motion. So the chair has to state the motion. If in the case of where it's already written on the agenda, you just have to make the judgment, do you need to read it again for the people watching on TV? Or is it clear to them? No, the chair should read it again, or at least make sure that everybody understands. Motion, seconded, state, the chair states it. And I want to tell you, that is like a door. Because until the chair states the motion, the maker can say, you know what? I changed my mind. Don't, never mind that motion. The seconder can say, I've thought about it, I don't even think we should talk about this, I withdraw my second. All that can happen. And then when the chair states the motion, it belongs to everybody. And that's an important point. Once the motion is made, seconded and stated by the chair, it no longer belongs to the maker or the seconder, it belongs to everybody. So, but, so a council called a special meeting. Six members came. It was one item stated for the meeting. They immediately, someone made the motion and it was seconded and stated by the chair. And then made the motion, got into a fight with one of the other members. And he left. And the clerk called me very early in the morning the next day, I know quite well. She said, what do I do? The person who made the motion left the meeting and I said, but the chair stated it. She said, that's right, Coco. You always say, once the chair states it belongs to everybody, it doesn't matter. And he went home. I said, right. She said, so it passed five zero. I said, you're in business. So, but then, so once the motion is stated, it's everybody's. I mention that because when we get to amending, amending, somebody always wants to say to the maker of the motion and the seconder, is this okay with you? And now we know, nice as they were, we don't care. Once the motion was made, seconded and stated by the chair, it got to be everybody's. It no longer belongs to the maker and no longer belongs to the seconder. You have to tell your chair, state the motion. Right, I had the opportunity to do a training for the Michigan Mayor's Association. And I said to all of them up in Mount Pleasant, this is your problem. You are not stating the motions. Actually, that, that's, in your case, that is why the clerk has read the motion, that's why. Yes.
Okay, so in either case, the chair must, somebody must say, either the clerk or the chair must state the motion.
Everybody's, yes. Should say, the motion's been made and seconded. Here it is. Now I'm going to read it. Is there any discussion? And this is really more, more, we, we do it better in local government because either the clerk or someone has actually read the motion from the agenda. In nonprofits is where you're more likely to have this not, it happen that nobody actually says. And in nonprofits, you also have the, she makes a comment, she adds to it and she says, so moved. And the secretary is going, so moved, what? If you're the secretary, you should be saying, state the motion.
I want to know something, going back to that. Now, and I think you said, if the business manager gave a report, and it doesn't have to be a motion or a report to accept whoever's report, or do you just not have to do anything with it?
I don't, I'm not a fan of accepting reports. Because when you go to accept a report, you have just voted for every word that's in their report. You adopt the recommendation. Adopt the recommendation, which is not the entire report, just the recommendation. And interestingly enough on that, and I don't know if you're seeing this too, I'm seeing more reports with the recommendations at the top. Instead of at the end. So if you read the recommendation and you like it, you don't have to read the whole report if you're good with it. So I think it's kind of coming out of corporate America in that way. But the answer is, you adopt the recommendation. Adopt the recommendation. And, but not the report. And if the report has no recommendation, you say simply that the report was presented. I remember, I've read a lot of planning boards.
So I'm saying, so like if the chair, the chair states, can the person making the motion say, so moved? But he just right after he said.
Yes, 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 that's okay. And by the same token, after the clerk has read a recommendation to the council, mayor can say, do you wish that read again? And if nobody does, then you can just move forward. But asking that takes the fact that now it's everybody's motion. Good questions. Yes, exactly. So he's had the motion, he's had the support, and now he's going to say, do you wish to have it read again? And when nobody does, that means everybody got it. Well, it would be handy if he did, because then it makes it clear that everybody's comfortable with what it is. It's the first thing you, you know, don't tell him that the first week, just tell him he should say, he should say second. Try, try getting him to say second for a while and then kind of move up on you.
Okay, Coco, so even the, from the planning commissioners and the planners, I'm having some difficulty understanding that, that we need to have motion and that someone needs seconding or move on. Because some of our agenda items require a decision made by the body. So you could need to have some grounds for someone not to second that, that motion. You know what I'm saying? People can't just not second a motion because they don't favor it. You need to have a discussion and have the findings of facts.
But the fact is that, that there would be somebody there who would want it discussed. And that's all the second is.
Correct, so we would just trust that.
Someone's going to say second. Right. Correct, it's not really on the floor until the chair states it. And so let's look at amending for a moment. On your gold sheet. Amending is right, you know, I skipped a step. On your gold sheet, page two, bottom, see where it says main motions? I forgot to tell you how to read this chart. So go across main motions. The first one is, can it interrupt? No. Best, and main motions can only come when there's no other business on the floor. Does it need a second? Yes, there's the S. Is it debatable? Yes. Can it be amended? Yes. What kind of vote? Majority. Can it be reconsidered? And I'll hold your question on reconsidered to the side for a moment. But look, and if you look right across from that, right in this bottom corner, we see types of amendments. And we insert or add at the end, strike out, strike out and insert. Or you can strike out a word or paragraph and insert it in a different place. So those are all the ways that you can amend. Most often, we have what we call friendly amendments. Somebody will say, well, could we add green to that? I want to make a friendly amendment, could we agree to that? Now, the important thing is, you're not going to ask the maker and the seconder. Somebody's going to say to the whole group, any objection adding to that? Seeing none, it's added. It's nice, you don't have to vote on it, it's just in there. So that's a friendly amendment. But remember, it has to be friendly for everyone. So we can't, if we had a body of seven and we only asked the maker and the seconder, we just let two people amend a motion when it takes a majority vote, which should have been four. So now, in a nonprofit, often they create motions as they go along. That's what the so moved is. But you have to get the last person who said so moved to say what the motion is, so it can be written down. And that's a point where, which, when the person says the motion, somebody may say, you forgot the part about not to see this cost. You can do it. I move to amend that motion to buy benches by inserting green before benches. And then the motion would be, so the main motion on the floor was to buy benches for the park. And it was seconded stated by the chair, and we've been discussing it. And you said, well, I really want the, them to be green, because it looks nicer. So I moved to amend by inserting green before benches. You get a second. Chair says, move to amend by inserting green before benches, and then invites you to speak to it, because it was your idea. Then we invite everybody else to talk about it. And finally, the chair says, see no one else? All those in favor of inserting green before benches, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and now the motion before you is to buy green benches. Then you go on, is there any further discussion? So this person says, I moved to amend by adding at a cost not to exceed a hundred dollars per bench. Is there a second? Yes. Is now moved to amend by adding at a cost not to exceed a hundred dollars per bench, so then if you vote for it, the motion will be to buy green benches at a cost not to exceed a hundred dollars a bench. All those in favor of the most, the amendment to add at a hundred dollars a bench, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion now is to buy green benches at a cost not to exceed a hundred dollars. And at this point, somebody might say, and I think we should get them from.
Costco.
Yes, from Costco, yeah. Um, and somebody, you know, and then, so you could, now, when we go to advance with the student senate, guess what motion we start with? Order a pizza. And we just, by the time that motion is finished, it is about this long, includes vegan options, includes mushrooms, includes, you know, anchovies for this much. But the point is, they learn how to amend. And then, but the easy way to do it, as I said, is just simply say, the motion is on the floor to buy benches, and somebody says, can I make a friendly amendment to add green? And if there's no objection by anybody there, it's now green benches. By the way, if you're taking the minutes, the motion is so and so moved to buy green benches. Um, and then at the end, it says, the motion as adopted was. You don't have to put in all the steps. And, until you keep, yeah. The trick is to remember that this is like your kids' blocks. The main motion is on the bottom, and you're putting the amendments on top of it. And if you don't go in reverse order, back to that main motion, as amended, you're gonna upset everything. So that's really the only trick to amending, is remembering to go back down in the reverse order. So that's amending, and that's friendly amendments. Friendly amendments are a nice thing, but as you said, as I say, you have to make sure they're friendly. Then postpone to a definite time. Now, I could see from the meetings I watched, you're lay on the table, folks. I don't like lay on the table, and I'll tell you why. It's right here on page two, top of the bottom grid. See, lay on the table, right under the words subsidiary motions. Look at that. It's undebatable. And not amendable. Well, what's it for? It's for immediate. You have the motion on the floor to buy the green benches. Your state senator just came in, wants to bring you an update from Lansing. You don't, you know they don't wanna hear the discussion about the green benches. Somebody quickly says, I moved to lay the motion on the floor for the green benches. Somebody seconds it, it's not debatable, chair's not gonna ask anything, and, and but, instead, you're gonna say, all those in favor of laying it on the table, say aye. Those opposed, say no, the ayes have it, and thank you, state senator. State senator leaves. Next page, that little bottom section, very top one. Take from the table. Senator leaves, somebody says, I knew to take from the table, the motion on the green benches. Not debatable, not amendable, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say no. The green benches, my motion's now back before you. That's what lay on the table is for. That's why lay on the table expires at the end of the next meeting. If you don't take it from the table at the end of the next meeting, it is gone. Gone, which is why it has the nickname, the killing motion. People lay things on the table for the purpose of getting rid of them. That's not what it's for. Well, what should we do, Coco? There it is. Postpone to a certain time, right in the middle of the bottom. Postpone to a certain time. It's debatable, it's amendable. I can say, I moved to postpone the motion on the green benches to the, to budget hearings. And then when I get a second and it's stated, I can say, I'm doing this because I don't think we have the money to buy this many green benches. And I also wanna know, what are they gonna be made of? I think they're making some benches out of recycled automobile tires these days. What do we know about that? So you see, because it's postponed to a certain time, I get to say why. And I get to send it where I want. So lay on the table is not what you want to do. You want to use the motion to postpone to a certain time. And if the mayor had the chart, he would also know that that's why he shouldn't have asked for debate on the motion to lay on the table, because it's not debatable. So that's what debate, that's what lay on the table is for. So a recent community told me that they just had kept a book of motions laid on the table and the years in which they've been laid, and they were just waiting to take them back up. And I said to them, here's the good news. Here's the good news, you don't have to worry about it, because they're all gone. All gone. So what about changing your mind? And this is where we come to the Rs. Reconsider. That's when you wanna change your mind in the same meeting. The motion was on the floor to place a stop sign at Chester and Elm. And the person to give the traffic report on that was not present. But the council went ahead and voted to place the stop sign. Then the fellow came in and came up to the microphone, when there was nothing on the floor, and explained that he was going to give a report saying not to place a stop sign there. And we know, in government, when you place a stop sign, it has to meet certain criteria, which are called warrants. And it didn't meet the warrants, and he was gonna recommend no. We're in the same meeting where the motion was adopted. That's key. Someone who voted on the prevailing side, which in this case was a yes, has to say, I moved to reconsider. I moved to bring the motion back up before us as if we had not voted on it. That's what we consider. But it has those two requirements. It's only good in the same meeting, or, and it has to be somebody who voted on however it went, the prevailing side. So in this case, that was true, and they voted yes, they wanted to bring the motion back. So think of, this is like the pop tart coming out of the toaster. It's not changed. It's exactly as it was when you voted on it, it's just now, you, you're giving it another shot. Yeah, or it takes a second. Yeah, yeah, it, it's, and by the way, the one I'm describing, besides on the slide, it's also in this little batch on page three, the bottom. So they, they did vote to reconsider, and they talked about it all over again, and then they voted no, not to place the sign. Now, in this case, that's not very crucial, because as we're sitting here, somebody in Inkster is running over a stop sign. So they could have just put the stop sign in the DPW garage and waited for one to be needed. So that was not too crucial. But what if it had been something very serious? Then you have to go to rescind. Rescind has no deadline, rescind has no requirement of who can make it. But rescind has a thing, you can't rescind something that you did that you can't undo. So if you signed a contract, hired a person, did something like that, you can't rescind. You could, that could be for the last year.
So if you voted on something.
And then you never did it.
You can't, you never did it. It wasn't, it would have started the process, you could rescind it.
Yeah, so in fact, rescind, can rescind it? In fact, you know, when, when, you know, when rescind is used a lot? When people go to clean up their, um, minutes and discover that they adopted something that conflicts with something else. They, you know, they made, at two different meetings over a period of a year, they made two different decisions. So then they rescind the one they don't want. So it's really a cleanup thing. But sometimes, it's really significant. So a community in the UP, I don't know the backstory, they voted to take out a part of park and put in a parking lot. Once this construction started, the citizens went nuts. So they called, and they said, what can we do? Well, obviously, it's not the same meeting, that can't be considered. But I said, what did you do? Well, we signed a contract with ABCP. And I said, well, you can't, and does the contract have a penalty clause for cancellation? Yes, it did. So their motion was, I need to rescind the contract with ABCP and pay the penalty as required. So they found a way out, but you can't rescind something that you can't undo. And as I said, rescind has no time limitation, only the fact that it can't be something that you can't undo. Well, in that case, it wasn't a contract. And we're the city, and that's your street, so you can still take that stop sign. But if you sign the contract with the company to provide you a stop sign on the week, then you'll be in trouble. So it has to be something, you know, remove the stop sign. Yes, and if, in fact, if they had, if he hadn't arrived, at the next meeting, they probably would have rescinded. And that would have been okay, because it's a safe, like, forty block stop sign, from the issue. So that's, that's the undo motions, as we call them. Yes, yes. And actually, probably, now, usually the contracts say, either party may rescind, sixty days notice is a typical thing. And so you would, in that case, you would actually go through the process of giving the notice to rescind to the company, and probably a motion to rescind would be unnecessary. Would be simply following the details of that contract. Well, I mean, no, it's usually sixty days notice. Yeah, yeah. So if it's within the confines of what's allowed, then. Yes. Right, in that case, it wouldn't be a matter of rescind. It would be a matter of writing out a new contract to remove the parking lot that was placed over the park, put the park back. So, you know, different solutions for different issues. You've all been wonderfully patient, your brains are now totally spaghetti. You can't think clearly anymore, but I've, I've stuffed a lot of stuff in there. And you kind of think about it, and think about what for your organization would be the best. And remember, these are the detailed ways to look at it. But Parliamentary Procedure Life, as I call it, which is this book, um. Oh, I forgot, oh, I did forget one more. Renew. The motion was made, and like the ones that were laid on the table, motion was made and nothing was ever done with it. So that motion to buy the park benches was laid on the table, which means we didn't vote on it. So it didn't ever get voted on. Any member can make it at another meeting. So if you make a motion and it gets laid on the table, no action was taken to vote on the specific motion, it was just laid on the table. You can make that again. Or if you make a motion and it was defeated, and at the next council meeting, or the next organizational meeting, you have your friends there, and you think it'll pass, you can make it again. So, and people wanna use the words, they consider they want to use all kinds of things, you don't, you just make it over. And I'll, they'll just take, take, you know, sometimes you make a motion and it fails because of some detail. And to understand at the next meeting, you can make it again, even because you got their friends there and they'll vote for it, or because now you changed the motion just enough to make it happen. So it's failed, it's not, there was no action taken to approve it. So any motion that either, has either fails or has no action taken, can be made again. You know, when we see this a lot, right after the election, uh, people run for council based on the fact that they're gonna build that park, that the, the, that this council doesn't want. They get on, even though park failed time and time again, now they get on, they can make the motion, build the park. So, so anytime, anything is, and any member can do it, and, um. Then just some tips for better meetings, and then the names of the books. Okay, any last questions? Or we could.
Yes. Um, if a project fails, uh, that motion was made in project nine. Could someone at the next council meeting renew the motion if they already denied the project?
No, that is a very good question, because the question is, did, was the vote taken and it, so to do it and it failed? Or was the vote taken to deny it? That's, you know, this is something specific to planning, that this comes up all the time. The fact that you did not adopt the project does not necessarily mean that you deny it, it depends on how you vote on it. So sometimes, the answer is, we didn't, the project was presented, we did not adopt it, because we didn't like the this, the that, and the other thing about the project. Didn't deny it, we just didn't vote for it. That gives the petitioner a chance to come back again, also when to solve the things that you didn't like. The petitioner comes back, and now you can see that there's stuff about the project that's just not any good, and now you deny it. Well, usually it comes out, when you're discussing a project, usually it comes out in discussion. Somebody will say, there's not enough parking for that, or there's, there's not enough setback, there's not enough place for landscaping. So in that way, the discussion kind of rubles it up, but you don't have to state in the motion why you don't want it. Unless, of course, it's something where you do have to make your, you know, BCA and CBA get this all the time. They actually have to state the fact, the items of that they're denying it for, because BCA goes to, um, court. Planning goes to council. I don't, I, I'm not, that's an attorney's question. That's a good question for an attorney. My experience has not been, and it has to be. In fact, when it's a planning board decision that goes to the council, sometimes the less said, the better in terms of what they can sue you for, as opposed to CVA, where the, where the law requires that there be certain criteria. So if it's gonna. So if it's going to go from you to the council to CBA, that's their problem. The appeal problem is theirs on denying it. Usually, I was going to say, usually when planning board do not, votes no on something, it's pretty clear to the petitioner what didn't go right, and they get to come back again. When it goes to council and council chooses to oppose it, that's really their, their issue. That's no longer yours. Oh, I'm saying you have to ask the attorney that. You have to ask the attorney if you have to list clauses why you turned it down. I don't know that. You have to ask your city attorney. As I say, I get a written opinion on that. Oh, okay. Yeah, special land use has their own requirements, you know. I mean, you're, and credits to those of you who are on the planning commission, because I always think that that's probably the most detailed work of any board or commission in any, in any community, especially one that wants to have development, because you're constantly on the issue of selecting the best possible options. And doing out how to make that happen, that that's a real challenge. And you, you know, that's why your R R P is so good, because it's teaching you a lot of stuff about how to make those decisions. Sometimes, you know, you can look at other communities where the quick fix was not the right fix. And that's, but that's so tempting when it's in front of you, and it looks juicy, you know, and, and nice. And then it swears it won't make you fat, promises. But then, you know, it's like we said before about changing any rules. It's better to just let them see how it would work out without making a commitment, and then just try and see. I, I think planning board is, is really tough stuff, to tell you the truth. And by the way, that goes for the communities that, as well, that have people pounding on their doors dying to get in. They have to be very selective too, and really take time to. And lots, lots of communities that should have been smarter didn't necessarily do things. And now, it's a whole changing life, as we discover whether or not people are going to go back to the office. Because now, there are a lot of office parks, et cetera, built, that now we're wondering if that's why. So, I mean, it's such a changing landscape, that that's why I think planning is really challenged, to figure out what the next step's going to be. Well, you're a wonderful community, and you've been so patient to last through this. And I expect emails from all of you saying, what was it you said? So, thank you so much. Oh, is there any public comment? So, the book I launched is the 2020 edition, Do They Cross the Division? Takes about ten years. About every ten years, we'll get a new Roberts. So if you bought the 2020, you're good for quite a long time. And that's the same thing is true about this book. It will be good for another ten years, because this one, when this one changes, it affects this. But this is independent, so. And when I teach, by the way, the first, so the National Association of Parliament has these levels. There's the basic membership, and then there's the registered parliamentarian, and then there's the professional registered parliamentarian. And I am a trainer, and I train people for all of the different ones. And this, for the first two, this is the book I use. And then, when you go for professional registered parliamentarian, the big book. The big book looks big, but I have to tell you something about it. And the person who has a new one will notice this. The index is about twice as long as it ever was. The authors did a super job. So when you go in the back, it's really easy to find things inside the book. You don't have to know everything that's in the book. It's like a dictionary. You just need to know how to look up a word. You don't need to know how to spell all the words. So I, my skill is being able to really fast find something in the book. Oh, if you want a brown book, you have to buy it from the National Association of Parliament, whose address is on the front cover. And you don't have to be a member to buy a book from them. You just have to go to their bookstore and order it. But that, and you can see why, because I answer so many questions. It's handy if it stays flat. Thank you. Oh, okay, the email address. E, as in Eleanor, dot S I E W E R T at Wayne dot edu.
I have one thing too. So, your main mission is council members. You also look at the zoning ordinance as another rule that we follow. So zoning ordinance does guide the council to offer their findings of facts if they can.
Anyone else? You're not the most of the, the order to return. Probably.